... contentious at times and difficult. But when you're the governor, you're responsible. You're the adult in the room. You gotta forge consensus and bring people together in both sides of the aisle, and you have to get things done for the people who elected you. You can't say, "Well, I didn't get this done because the bill was never released from the subcommittee," where I had offered some significant amendments which were never voted on. But if they had been voted on and had been released from the subcommittee, well then, heck, we would have gotten it to the full committee, and boy, would we have really made progress then. Your eyes are glazing over, and no one's taking responsibility for that, not when you're governor. When you're governor, people want to know, "Did you do it or didn't you? Are you getting this done or not?" I tell you this because 13 years of being responsible for these decisions is what we need, in my view, right now behind the desk in the Oval Office. For the last seven years, we've had on-the-job training in the White House. A guy who the largest staff he ever managed before he took the most difficult and responsible executive position in the world was 30 people. Thirty people. A handful of the people in this room was the most that Barack Obama was ever responsible for managing. And yet, as a country, we gave the reins of the most complex, largest, most difficult-to-manage government the world has ever seen in the hands of somebody who had never made a consequential executive decision in his life. And we wonder why we're so frustrated and angry with this government. We are because they're incompetent at the very basic things we want them to do. They're incompetent at protecting our borders. They're incompetent at providing safety and security for the American people in the homeland. They're incompetent in dealing with the day-to-day challenges of management that all of us who've had strong executive positions have had to deal with. Who to hire and who to fire? How to deal with the issues that come up across a desk like that every day? They don't execute. You heard this week, the Department of Homeland Security said 120,000 people who had been given visas had their visas revoked. Okay? Where are they? We don't know. Who are they? We don't know. You know, why did you revoke them then? I don't know who they are or where they are, or what's the use of revoking them? These are the basics, everybody. This is, you know, what Vince Lombardi, you would have called, "The blocking and tackling." The basics of what you need to do to have a competent team. We need to start there. We need to get back to basics in this country from a governance perspective, and I know how to do that. But the reason why it's so important to do it is because the stakes are so high. And maybe three or four weeks ago, we all would have thought the stakes are high, but not that high. After Paris, after San Bernardino, this level of incompetence is no longer acceptable because lives are at risk. The national schools are closed today. The Los Angeles schools were closed earlier in the week. This is unacceptable. And let me tell you why these school systems close. You could sit and argue about the nature of the threat that each one faced, but you know why they're closing? Out of an abundance of caution. And you know why they're taking those actions? Because they have no faith or confidence in the fact that the federal government will protect them. You didn't see school systems closing on a regular basis when George W. Bush was President of the United States after 9/11? Because people believed, whether they agreed with the president or not, on a particular policy, that they were doing everything they could to protect the safety and the security of the American people. We don't have that feeling anymore. We have a president who wants to release more prisoners from Guantanamo, even though 30% of the prisoners he's released already have been verified to be back in terrorist activity by his own Director of National Intelligence. Thirty percent back in the terrorism business because he decided to release them from Guantanamo. We have a president who said the other night, "I don't understand the anxiety that people feel about terrorism because I don't watch enough cable TV." I didn't make that up, man. He said it. And then we had the woman who wants to succeed him, who said in a debate here in New Hampshire on Saturday night that, "As to ISIS, we're finally exactly where we want to be." Here's what I suggest to Secretary Clinton. I suggest that she suspend campaigning, get on an airplane, fly to Paris, and before Christmas, meet with the families of the murdered victims in Paris and tell them, "We're exactly where we want to be as to ISIS." As they endure, not celebrate, endure Christmas this year without their loved one, I want her to look them in the eye and say, "Well, we're exactly where we want to be as to ISIS." Fact is that she's Secretary Happy Talk. That's her new name. That's all I'm gonna call her from now on. Secretary Happy Talk. You know, the slogan for this administration should be, "Do you believe me or your lying eyes?" Because the American people see, they see quite well. And she's standing there in this state two days ago, trying to tell you, "That's exactly where we want to be." And then Martha Raddatz, three times, tried to ask her, "Secretary Clinton, you designed the policy to remove Gaddafi from Libya, and now Libya is in turmoil and a breeding ground for ISIS. What measure of responsibility do you hold for what's happening in Libya?" Three times she asked her, and three times she refused to take any responsibility for what's happening in Libya. Here's why she's a hypocrite. Because if the Libya policy had worked out well, if we had had a burgeoning, vibrant democracy that replaced Muammar Gaddafi in Libya, she would be literally setting her hair on fire and running around the stage to get you to notice that her policy was a success. Yet, when it's a failure, she refuses to be accountable. See, she's never been a governor. Because when something goes bad, there's nowhere else to point. There's no other finger to point. When something goes bad, you have to be accountable. We cannot afford to put some United States senator, Democrat or Republican, in the White House for the next four years. They don't know how to take responsibility. They don't know how to be accountable because all they have to do is every once in a while, She is the worst example of it. See, I want to be President of the United States not for the power. I want to be President of the United States for the responsibility. See, because I believe if you give me the responsibility, that every day I will acquit that responsibility in a way that will make you proud of your vote. Doesn't mean you'll agree with every decision. You won't. And as I tell people in New Jersey all the time, "If you're looking for the politician who's gonna agree with you 100% of the time, here's my advice: Go home and look in the mirror. You're it. You're the only person you agree with 100% of the time." That's not what we should demand of people. What we should demand is that they're willing to be honest, have integrity, be clear and open and accountable for what they do as a leader. That's what I've been taught for the last 13 years. That's what I've learned each time I've had to make a decision. The decisions that were good and the decisions that didn't go so well. And anybody who's human's gonna have both. You look at your own life, you know you've got 'em. We all wish we could take some of those decisions back. But a truly responsible candidate person can't, and the stakes are too high. Because if a Center for the Developmentally Disabled in San Bernardino, California, can be a target for a terrorist attack, that means that everywhere in America is a target for a terrorist attack. It's a different world, everybody. This isn't Al Qaeda anymore. Al Qaeda wanted to do the big things: the USS Cole, American Embassies, the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, the Capitol Building. They wanted to do big things. ISIS has said all they want is what they call "the sweet taste of American blood." We're dealing with a different opponent now, and we gotta act differently. And we need someone who knows what they're doing. And that's exactly who I am and what I'll be if you give me the chance to be President of the United States. And I'm here tonight not to give you some big, long speech. I'm here tonight to hear what's on your mind and answer your questions. So let me tell you what the rules are. In fact, in New Hampshire, there's only one rule. In New Jersey, when I have town hall meetings, there are four rules. It's because it's New Jersey. Gotta have four rules. New Hampshire, I've only needed one. You raise your hand, I call on you. You get to ask me a question. See, this is not like those other town hall meetings that I hear other presidential candidates hold in, um, in New Hampshire. You don't have to write down your questions on the way in and hand them to staff, then have staff read them, and then decide which ones I'm best at answering, and then give me those, and then I read them and answer them, and everybody thinks we've had a town hall meeting. Now, I have to say the truth. It would not be fair of me to name the candidate who does town hall meetings that way. It wouldn't. But her initials are Hillary Rodham Clinton. So we're gonna give you a real New Hampshire Town Hall Meeting tonight in New London. I appreciate you coming and being here, and I look forward to answering your questions. So raise 'em up, and let's see who's got questions here. Yes, sir. And they're gonna bring a microphone to you so that everybody in the room can hear you.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
Here's my question. Right now, our nuclear weapons labs are run by private corporations. Now, among other things, they work to earn as handsome a profit as they can. My question is this: Should profit guide our nuclear weapons policy in particular and our defense policy in general?
I, uh, the answer is no. But also, the answer should be, I don't believe the two necessarily have to be mutually exclusive. So if a great company is contracting with the government and can provide the appropriate service for the people of this country in the nuclear area or other defense areas or other areas of the government, and they make a reasonable profit while providing a good service, I have no objection to that. I'm a capitalist. I have no objection to it. If what you're saying by your question is that what will drive their conduct first is how much money they make versus whether or not the job is done the right way, then that is completely unacceptable. But let me just warn everybody that in some of these examples, and let's take it out of the nuclear example for a minute. You remember, in the immediate aftermath of 9/11, there was a decision made by the government to change all private security guards at our national airports to government employees, the TSA. And the idea was, well, if they're government employees, they'll do the job better than the private guys who obviously failed by allowing people on the planes with box cutters and everything else. We've now seen, over and over again, in the last six or seven years, spot checks and tests that have been run at the nation's airports with TSA employees where they're missing 80 to 90% of the weapons that are being brought on to airplanes. So all I would say to you is that if the premise is that if profit is put ahead of competence and service to the government and the people who are paying the bill, that's unacceptable. If, in fact, we can find a way to have folks in the private sector who do the job extraordinarily well, and in the process, they make a profit that is not gorging a reasonable profit, I'm a capitalist, I have no problem with people providing service to the government and the private sector for a reasonable profit. But that's where management comes in. That's when who's responsible comes in. And you have to put responsible people in charge of those issues to make those kind of determinations. And if you don't put responsible people in charge, you could wind up getting the worst of both worlds. You could get gouged and get a lousy product on top of it, which is the worst of the scenario that you lay out.
That's it. Now, along those lines, I have a Christmas present for you.
Hey! How great to be in New London.
This is a summary of a report on nuclear risk reduction. The primary officer, author, and it was a panel of military people from around the world, the chief office author is Marine General James Cartwright. So for you, I hope you find it useful.
Thank you. Excellent. Something to read on the bus. I'm driving to Portsmouth tonight after I leave here. So I got a bit of a ride. Mary Pat wants to take it for me. Maybe she could read it and summarize it for me. All right, here you go. There you go, honey. Take it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Look forward to reading it. Yes, sir, up there. They're gonna come up and get you one?
Welcome to New Hampshire, Governor.
Thank you, sir.
As a former New Jersey-
Uh, where from?
Phillipsburg.
Phillipsburg. Beautiful. Very well. Just building a new high school in Phillipsburg.
That's right. That's right.
Proud of that.
I think one of the biggest things, the biggest threat that's facing our nation right now, other than terrorism, is the size of our debt.
Yes, sir.
Our, we, you know, what we're leaving for our children, our grandchildren, is, is, as former candidate Barack Obama said, "Unpatriotic," although he's tripled what he started with. What are your plans to get government spending not only under control, but under, reduced to the point where we can start chipping away at the national debt?
Good question. First off, let me say that as to what's happened already, just so we're clear, this president has incurred more debt during his seven years than every one of his 42 predecessors. Every one of them combined. Yes, sir. Combined. Now, everyone's doing the math right now. They're going, "Wait a second. Barack Obama's the 44th president. He said 42." I want you to remember that Grover Cleveland, born in New Jersey, was both the 22nd and 24th President of the United States. So I don't want anybody after this going, "Huck, man, he can't be president? They even know how many presidents we've had." All right? So I just want you to know, 22nd and 24th, just so we're clear on that one. Because I saw you. The wheels were grinding up there. He's like, "Man, this guy's dumb." Obama's 44, and he's saying 42? No, I got it. We're covered. He's increased the debt more than all of those predecessors combined. It's obscene. It's obscene. And it used to be, before he became president, that our GDP was a pers, or that our debt was a percentage of the GDP. Our debt now exceeds our GDP. That's a bad place to be. So what have I proposed to do? First, I'm the only candidate in this race, to this day, still, it's amazing to me, and I proposed this in April, who has put forward a detailed entitlement reform plan. Why do I lead with that? 71% of all federal spending, as of today, is spent on entitlements and debt service. 71%. Just to give you some measure of comparison, when Jack Kennedy was elected president 55 years ago, it was 26%. So 55 years ago, we spent 74 cents of every federal dollar on tomorrow. 55 years later, we spend 71 cents of every dollar on yesterday. What we borrowed and what we need to pay folks who are no longer working. Now, people ask me, "Why do you lead with entitlement reform in a campaign? It's the third rail of American politics. Anyone who touches it dies." I decided, "I'm not gonna touch it. I'm gonna hug it." And here's why. It's like what Willie Sutton said about why'd he rob banks? He said, "'Cause that's where the money is." If you want to deal with the national debt, you better deal with entitlements. And by the way, remember this: Debt service at a time when interest rates are near zero. Wait till those interest rates, and they've started to go back up, and wait till they really start to go up. That debt service number will climb significantly. So here's the good news and the bad news. The bad news is that I have a 12-point detailed entitlement plan. The good news is, I'm not gonna go over all 12 points right now. You can go to ChrisChristie.com if you're having trouble sleeping. Go to my website, read the plan. It's been scored by the Congressional Budget Office, not by me, by the Congressional Budget Office, and it scores out at saving over a trillion dollars, over a trillion dollars over the next 10 years. I'll give you the four big points that most people care about. They involve Social Security and Medicare, because those are the two entitlement programs that are the most expensive and that the people care about the most. On Social Security, point one is, we've gotta do something that we should do in response to a blessing. The blessing is that we're living longer. The average life expectancy of a woman today in America is 83 years old. The average life expectancy of a man is 79. Ah, she started to laugh. This lady started to laugh. That's because they're gonna live four years longer than us. Here's the thing, though. 10 years ago, we were six years behind you. Now we're four. We're gaining on you. And that four-year vacation you were hoping for at the end of your life away from us, you may not get it. You may be stuck with us the entire time. But these programs were created at a time when people died in their mid-60s. Social Security used to be able to retire at 62. Life expectancy for most people was anywhere between 62 and 65. Great deal for the government. You paid the money your whole life, and you collected anywhere from zero to three years on the deal, and then they kept the rest of the money. That's why Social Security worked so well for such a long time. But because of increases in medical science and the pharmaceutical industry, just happily, we're living longer lives and a better quality of life. So we need to change in regards to that. We need to raise the retirement age in Social Security. There you go. I said it, and I did not get struck by lightning. I say raise it two years and phase it in over 25 years. That means it'll go up one month a year for 25 years. So for anybody who's on Social Security right now, it doesn't affect them. And for those who are close, it may affect them for a few months, but that's all. But for my children, your children, be a big change. They'll, they'll take the whole two-year change. But you know what? By the time they get there, the life expectancy can be even longer than that. And in the short term, what we do is extend the absolute solvency of the program. Secondly, we have to means test Social Security. So what do I mean by that? If you make over $200,000 a year in retirement income, you have stopped working, and from the money you have invested, which would be, you'd have to have at least $4 to $5 million liquid to throw off $200,000 in income, do you really need a Social Security check? Let me think about it for a second, okay? I know you paid. I know you paid for it. But here's the thing. If you've got $4 or $5 million in the bank when you retire, first thing is I say, "God bless you. Good work. You raised a family, you worked hard, you had a great career, and you saved all that money. Congratulations." Second thing I'd say is, "God bless America. It's the only place in the world you could have done that." And here's the problem: Our books are unbalanced. And, and the only way you balance the books, everybody in this knows this, from a business to your own personal checkbook, is either more money in or less money out. There's no magic. It's more money in or less money out. So here's the choice that we're presented with. And you heard it on Democratic debates Saturday night. They say, "Take the cap off the Social Security payroll tax so that no matter how much money you make, you pay that payroll tax on every dollar." They say that's the way to get at the rich. I have another way of getting at people who have been successful. If you've been enormously successful over the course of your life, don't take a benefit at the end that you don't need just because you put money in over the course of your life. Why is my idea, I think, better than Hillary's? Here's why. Because the reason we're in this problem in the first place is because the government lied to you and stole from you. That's why. See, this money was also supposed to go into a trust fund, right? Oh, it's in the trust fund. It's in, as Al Gore called it back in 2000, "The lockbox." You all remember that, right? Now you're saying to yourself, "Do you remember Al Gore saying that? Or do you remember the guy who played Al Gore on Saturday Night Live saying that?" It doesn't matter for purposes of this conversation. Whichever one you remember, you remember. There's nothing in the lockbox. It's a stack of IOUs. The government has already spent all the money. They spent it. They stole it from you. So here's my question. If you got a choice between giving more money or not to a government that's already lied to you and stolen from you, why would you give them more? Because this time, they really mean it? Because I swear, if you give me more this time, I won't steal it? You know they'll steal it. You know the first time they have a choice between raising taxes, cutting spending, or taking that pile of money over there that nobody needs right away and that nobody will notice is missing? I'm telling you, they'll do the same thing. So this is not a question of, because I had a guy in Exeter early on in my campaign, stand up and say to me, "It's not an entitlement. I paid." And I said, "Okay, yeah, agreed. So what? It's gone. I didn't steal it. I'm just the guy reporting to you that it was stolen." And now, we gotta fix it. So we gotta means test it. Because I won't want to give this government another nickel after how irresponsibly they stole the money from the Social Security trust fund in the beginning. And by the way, remember one other thing Barack Obama left us with? And by the way, Republicans in Congress, this last budget deal? The Social Security Disability Insurance Program, which has grown exponentially under Barack Obama and was gonna be bankrupt in 2016? They stole $150 billion from Social Security Retirement to give to Social Security Disability. They're doing it now. So this isn't speculation on my part. They're doing it. They're doing it right now. And so that's what we need to do on Social Security. On Medicare, we need to do the same thing. Raise the eligibility age two years, phase it in over 25. And for folks who have over $200,000 in retirement income, meaning $4 to $5 million saved, they only get a 10% subsidy on their Medicare premiums, not the 75% subsidy they get now. So we'll still subsidize your Medicare premiums, but if you're pulling in $200,000 a year, you can afford to pay a little more for your medical premium, especially if you're getting a really good program like Medicare has been for most Americans in providing them with health care. Those ideas, plus a few others that are listed, will save over a trillion dollars. That's where we need to start. Secondly, we need to grow our economy much faster. We, and, and I'm gonna go through all this because my answer's already getting long. And you know, I had my children with me this weekend. My oldest son, Andrew, is still here, but my daughter Sarah, who's 19, my son Patrick, who's 15, and our daughter Bridget, who's 12. Were all with us this weekend, for part of the weekend. And as they were leaving to go back to school and to hockey and all the other things, I said to them, "So what did you think of Dad's town halls?" And they're like, "Good." I said, "No, no, no. What'd you really think?" And Sarah said to me, "Your answers could be shorter." All right? So I'm not gonna go through the whole tax reform plan and regulatory reform plan, which is on the website, and I urge you to go and see it. But we need to do those things to be able to grow the economy more because we're never gonna cut our way out of the deficit and debt we're in. We gotta grow our way out of it and cut our way out of it. You can't just cut exclusively. Last thing I'll tell you about what I've done as governor of New Jersey. When I came in on the cutting side, when I came in to office, we had an $11 billion deficit on a $29 billion budget. That's what I was left by my predecessor. Think about that. That's a 40-some percent deficit. By percentage, it was the largest deficit in America for any state, $11 billion on $29 billion. And they immediately told me, "Well, we're gonna have to raise taxes." And I said, "No." And I spent six weeks, three days a week, going through the budget line by line. It was a painful, ugly process. And we cut 800 programs from the state budget. 800 programs and balanced the budget. Now, let me tell you, I probably cut a program you like, maybe more than one. Because, believe me, I got the emails and the phone calls and the protests on the steps of the Capitol about it. Every one of those programs was either started by a governor or by a member of the legislature, and they had a constituency. And every time you cut it, someone would say to you, "Governor, I understand you have to balance the budget." Jerry can relate to this, like, "I understand you have to balance the budget, but this program is too important to cut. Cut all those other programs." Right? That's what people tell you all the time. What you have to do is be absolutely, absolutely immune to that argument. We are saddling our children with the most monumental debt the world's ever seen. We gotta cut spending in the federal budget. And there're gonna be programs I'm gonna cut that you're gonna like, and, and if you come out of here tonight and you say you're gonna vote for me, and then I become president, and then I cut a program you like, you're gonna write a letter to me or send an email or something and say, "I can't believe it. You bum. I voted for you in the New Hampshire primary." in the New Hampshire primary, sent you on a rocket ship on your way to the presidency of the United States, you get there, and you cut my fill-in-the-blank program, which means so much to me and my family. You're terrible." I'm telling you, I've already got the form letter figured out. That I'm gonna send back to you. Send back to you, "Dear, fill in the blank, I told you I was going to do it. Very truly yours, Chris Christie, President of the United States." Okay? So... So that's the way we'll deal with it. Man, I hope I get to send you that letter, buddy, because if I do, that means this has been a pretty good year for me. Alright. How about this young lady in the back? She's got a Superman shirt on, which attracted me immediately to her.
Hi.
Hi, how old are you?
11.
And what's your name?
Courtney.
Okay, Courtney, what's your question?
Um, so what are you gonna do when, if you become president, what are you gonna do for schools and for kids' education?
Good question, Courtney. The most important person in your education is you. When you work hard, when you listen to your teachers, when you do your homework, you have the best chance to be as successful as you can be. But you're not the only important person in your education. The next most important people are your parents. And as President, what I would like to do is empower your parents to make sure that they get to choose what the best education is for you. Whether it's a public school, or a parochial school, or a private school, whatever they think is best. I want them to be able to choose. Because there's no one who loves you more or is more concerned about your future than your mom and dad. Third most important person in your education is your teacher. I want you to have a great teacher in your classroom who every day is motivated by two things. Making sure you learn as much as you possibly can. And that that teacher knows that they will be rewarded based upon how well you do. So if a teacher's in a classroom and his or her students are doing really well, they'll be rewarded more. That's the way it should be. Every place else in our society, the better you do, the better product you turn out, the better you're paid, the better you're compensated. The other thing I want your teacher to know is that your parents are part of the game. And that they're gonna help the best they can to help you with your homework, to encourage you to read, to encourage you not to leave your homework till the very last minute. Right? To turn off the TV every once in a while, to turn off the video games, to put down your iPhone. All those things. You don't have an iPhone, do you, Courtney? That's so good. We have a rule in our house. No smartphones till you're 14. Now, what's your rule? You got a rule? See, so, I want you to get as few distractions as you can and get focused on your work. The last thing I'll tell you about education is, we spend lots of money on education in this country, but we're not spending it all the right way. Do you have a big backpack you carry every day? With lots of books in it? Not very many books? Okay, and right, is it heavy? Sometimes, right? See, I don't think you should have to carry all that stuff back and forth every day. See, what I think we should do if we're gonna spend this money is, we should get you, and this is of course a contradiction to what I just said about the smartphones, but you're not allowed to put any games on this one. We should get you an iPad. And every one of your books should be on your iPad. You just have to carry that one thing. That's all you have to remember. You can take your notes on there. You can read your books on there. You can do everything on there, and you carry it back and forth. Because you know what? You understand how to work that better than I do. Right? Kids your age and my kids' age, they understand stuff in this technological world so much better than we do, and that's the way they learn now. We can't keep teaching kids the same way we got taught. And we are. Bunch of chairs facing forward at a black or a whiteboard with one person standing in the front, and you with paper and pen taking notes. Man, we were doing that back in the 1800s. Technology's different now, and your brain works differently than mine does. You've been exposed to all different kinds of things that I was never exposed to. If you need an example of this, wait till tonight, right? After the town meeting is over, lots of people will come up and ask me for pictures. Right? And then they'll have their spouse hand the camera to them, and he, most of the time, will fumble with the camera and not know how to put the camera on, and not know if they really took a picture or not. And then, we'll hand it to Courtney. And Courtney will go, "Okay, boop, okay, you're done. Next. Boop, next, next." Right? You'll know exactly how to do it, instinctively. So we need to use that, because that's the way your brain works. So let's use technology much more. It would be a great thing for us to spend some of our education money out in this country rather than fighting unions and bloated contracts and all the stuff, and the politics of all this that gets in the way of teaching you. Those are the things I think we need to do for education in this country. And if we do those things, all of us, me, your parents, your teachers, your principals, and the government, if we do all those things together, you're gonna have the best chance to be whatever it is you wanna be. I want to tell you the last thing. The last thing is what my mother used to tell me all the time. I could still hear it ringing in my ears if I closed my eyes and laid in bed at night. My mother would say to me, "Christopher," because if you named your kid Chris Christie, you would want to just say Christopher, right? Like, you wouldn't want to own up to that. She'd say, "Christopher, you can be anything you wanna be if you work hard enough." She'd say it to me over and over again. And you know what, Courtney? She was right. Because I worked really hard in my life, and look at me. I'm getting to run for President of the United States. That's pretty cool. And you can be whatever it is you wanna be. If you wanna run for President, if you wanna be a doctor or a lawyer, if you wanna be an engineer, if you wanna go to outer space, if you wanna be a teacher, if you wanna be a soccer player, whatever it is you wanna be, if you do that work that way and you work really hard, what I want is for you to look in the mirror and really believe, like I believed when my mother told me that, that you could be whatever you wanna be. And I believe you can be. So that's what I would do for education, and that's a really good question. And always wear that Superman shirt, because it gets people's attention, alright? Thank you, Courtney.
Thanks, Governor Christie, for being here in New London.
My pleasure.
My wife and I took a recent trip to Yosemite National Park. And as a lifelong Republican, I have to say, that trip has changed my viewpoint on the environment. And I also see the younger generations in my family possibly leaning a little more to the Democratic side, and it seems to mostly be revolved around environmental issues. So I was wondering if you'd be willing to pledge to help protect our national parks from commercial activities, such as possibly drilling in the Arctic or even here in New Hampshire. This trip has changed my outlook on Northern Pass, coming through part of the White Mountain National Forest. I'd just like to get your thoughts on and your environmental stance.
Sure. Listen, I don't think there's anybody who has a family, raises children, and loves this country that wants anything other than clean air and clean water and open spaces to be able to explore and enjoy with our families. And I've done a lot in New Jersey, without boring you with the record on, buy more open space and protecting our environment. I'll tell you a little bit about that, so you know what I've done. But like with everything else in life, there has to be some balance. Right? So I can't be extreme and shouldn't be extreme one way or the other. So, in New Jersey, we've done enormous things to help expand our state parks in the state to grow and to thrive, and given them some more funding and given them some more rules to protect them. We also have set up an energy policy where 53% of all the electricity generated in New Jersey is generated by nuclear. And this has done a lot to keep the air cleaner. We also now are the third highest solar-producing state in the country. And you go out tonight after this, you're gonna win a lot of drinks at the bar, if you ask anybody. Who are the top three solar-producing states in America, right? They'll get the first two, Arizona and California. Easy, right? See how many states, and get one drink for every state that they miss. Until they get to New Jersey, okay? Now, what that's done is, we've partnered with the private sector to make it affordable. Not with government imposition of things, but to partner with the private sector so that for businesses, manufacturing plants, shopping malls, and homes. People are using solar energy because it makes sense, and they can sell energy back to the grid in a good year. And that helps them to bring some of their energy costs in some months below zero. I built three new natural gas-fired plants. Because natural gas is a cleaner burning fossil fuel, and it's become abundantly available to us from the Marcellus Shale in Pennsylvania. Now, we've had to build pipelines to bring that. And that can be controversial at times. But the alternative is to burn more coal, which is worse for our footprint and for the equality of our air. That's what I mean by balance, right? So, you know, y'all people who oppose a pipeline, okay. Well, then I say to them, "What's the alternative?" And I had this discussion today. I was with Walt at the VFW Post. And a woman wanted me to oppose a certain pipeline that's going on in the state. I go, "Listen, I don't know enough about this to take a position one way or the other. But what I will tell you is, I believe states should make these decisions, not the federal government. It's your state. It's your environment in your state. You should make these decisions. We should empower the states to do it, not the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission or some other alphabet soup thing down in Washington, DC. You should decide." But what I said to her was, "As President, I'll give you that authority, but then you better decide to do something. Because the energy prices in New Hampshire are too high. You're exponentially higher than most of the rest of the country. That affects your ability to grow business in the state. That affects your ability to have seniors be able to stay here and afford to stay here on a fixed income when their heating and their electricity prices continue to go up." So that's what I mean by balance. I don't want to tell New Hampshire whether they should build the Northern Pass. I don't want to tell New Hampshire about whether or not they should build a particular pipeline in a particular way or not. But what I do want to say to New Hampshire is, if I give you the authority, do something with it. And make sure you do it in a way that's responsible and balanced for the people who live here. Your only need is not to have the cleanest environment. It is also to provide for the economic well-being of the people in this state as well. And to have continuing increasing energy prices, I think, is something that will drive people out of the state and certainly drive seniors out and drive businesses out. And so that's the kind of approach I'm talking about, and that's what I've done with real specific examples in New Jersey. What's it led to? We pulled out of the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which was a northeastern compact, because all it was was another tax scheme that made our bills higher. We've already reached our clean air goals for 2020 by 2014, taking this approach and not increasing taxes on you in order to do it. This, to me, is a common sense approach to protecting our environment and respecting the needs of our citizens, both for their own livelihoods and for the businesses they want to build. And so in the end, that's what I would do. And my two favorite state parks in New Jersey, which if you ever come through our state at different times of the year, in the winter, now you should come to Washington's Crossing State Park. Washington Crossing State Park is a beautiful state park that is right on the site of where Washington crossed the Delaware and helped to create all this. We didn't win that one. We'd all be speaking with a British accent, I suspect. And curtseying to the Queen. And then if it's the summer, I want you to come to Island Beach State Park, right on the Jersey Shore. It is a place where, is it $12? $10. $10 a carload. You can only imagine what some teenagers are in when they come down here, right? It's $10 a carload to get into Island Beach State Park. It is a long, seven-mile, 11-mile-long. 11-mile-long barrier island on the Jersey Shore where you can drive on, fish, camp, or go sit on the beach and enjoy the Atlantic Ocean for $10 a carload. Come and see that. It's one of the most beautiful beaches you'll ever see. You will think that you're in Nantucket or on Cape Cod, to give you some comparison. Except you're in the middle of the most densely populated state in America. And you're only about a five-minute drive from Snooki and the situation, okay? So, that, and it has that kind of beach. I'm protecting those parks because that's part of the character and the heartbeat in New Jersey. And Yosemite is part of the character and the heartbeat of this country. And we have to protect those things because it's part of who we are. And it was one of the great things that a great Republican did in our country, Teddy Roosevelt, and we should continue to do that. So thanks for raising the question. First time I've been asked that, by the way, in 43 town hall meetings. So, thanks for asking it. I'm gonna give you my microphone, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. What can you, as President, do to reduce the cost of an education beyond high school for students so that they aren't graduating with $80,000, $100,000 in debt?
That question has now been asked in 41 of 43 town hall meetings. Okay, four points. Two on paying back your debt, two on lowering your costs. On paying back your debt, it is unconscionable now that students take out student loans and cannot refinance them if lower rates are available. They must continue to pay the higher rates so the government can make money off our kids. It's wrong. It's unconscionable. If you can find a commercial bank to refinance your loan, we should let you, the same way you can refinance your mortgage, you can refinance your car loan, or any personal loan, to lower interest rates for those kids. Second, we should set up a national service option. Beyond military service, national service. And say to kids as they're coming out of college, young people as they're coming out of college, "If you want to serve three years in national service to help make your community, your state, your country a better place, we will give you credits every year for the work you do to reduce the amounts of your loans. So that when you then get out to go into the private or public sector workforce, you don't have to make the decision about where to work based purely upon how much you're gonna get paid." I think people are much better when they follow their passion and then figure out how to make money from that. Not just pick a job purely based on the paycheck. It can work out. But I'd rather have these people, after they've been able to get educated and served, to be able to choose where they want to go to work based upon a vibrant economy and what's in their heart about what they want to do with their lives. On the cost side, here's the problem. I'm gonna remember my daughter ringing in my ears about shorter answers. This story is usually longer. I'll truncate it for you as best I can. Our daughter Sarah, the one who told me to have the shorter answers. She's a 19-year-old sophomore at Notre Dame. This summer, we got a letter from the President of Notre Dame to your parents. First paragraph, he's a priest, Father John Jenkins. First paragraph is basically, "Dear parents, thank you for the blessing you've bestowed upon us by entrusting the souls of your children to our care for their education over the next number of years." Right? It's Notre Dame, right? You can hear Rudy playing in the background, right? You close your eyes, you can see the Golden Dome, you can see Touchdown Jesus. Your heart's pounding, right? How many Catholics do we have in the audience tonight? Can you raise your hand, Catholics? Okay. You know what the next paragraph is, right? It's from a priest. It's the money paragraph, right? As soon as they get your heart pounding, they move in for the money. The next paragraph is, that's why we're so pleased to tell you that tuition this year is only gonna increase 3.9% in a 1% inflation world. 3.9%. And then he tells us, "That's the lowest annual increase in tuition at Notre Dame in 40 years." 3.9%, the lowest annual increase in tuition at Notre Dame in 40 years. And the total cost? $62,500. Right? So... In any other normal circumstance, right? If you had a situation where you, you know, were deciding whether something was valuable or not, you'd just make an evaluation. You'd say, "Well, okay. Is a Notre Dame, year of a Notre Dame education worth $62,500? If you think it is, you pay it. If you think it isn't, you don't." Let's say I called Sarah downstairs. The one who sends me pictures of the Golden Dome and the grotto. And she sends me pictures from the stands at Notre Dame Stadium on football Saturdays. Right? She has drank the Kool-Aid. Alright, she loves Notre Dame. And I call her downstairs, and Mary Pat and I look at her, and we say, "Listen, you know what? We've made the economic evaluation. This is not a value anymore for us. So we're gonna send you someplace that's cheaper." 19-year-old daughter. I suspect that after the crying, the snapping of the feet, the running upstairs, the slamming of the door, and the "you're ruining my life", that what would happen would be, Mary Pat and I would sit there and say, "Okay, we'll figure out how to make it work." Here's the problem. The colleges know that, too. They know it. They know you're not making this decision based upon hard-headed numbers. They know this is beaten. And that there's nothing more precious to you in your life than your son or daughter, and then being happy and getting the best education they can, because you believe that that will lead to an even greater future for them. And we were put on this earth as parents to believe that we need to give our children not only what's good, but better than what we had, the best we could give them. Colleges play on this. So here's what we need to do. First thing is, we need them to tell us everything they're spending this money on. A college bill is the most opaque bill in the world. Tuition, room and board, other fees. That's it. If you go out tonight in New London to some restaurant, and you, four of you go out, and you eat dinner and you have drinks, and they hand you a check at the end, and you flip the check over and it says, the check over and it says, food, $125. You call the waiter and go, hey, man, come here for a second, would you detail out here what, everything we had and everything we cost? College bill, you go, hey, where do I sign? Three lines. They need to tell us. The reason they need to tell us, not only because we need to know, it's because they'll be embarrassed to tell you. They are wasting money at colleges and universities all across this country on things that are monuments to them and their egos and have nothing to do with making our kids' education better. We start forcing them to tell us what they're spending it on, believe me, they're gonna start spending it differently. Secondly, we need to give you the chance to unbundle that bill. You pick what you pay for. Here are the things your child's gonna use, the things I'm not, I'm not paying for. It's the only way to put a market test on this. So if 98% of the people say we're not paying for the rock climbing wall, and by the way, you all have a rock climbing wall at UNH. Are you kidding me? You have rocks. Right, you're the granite state, the granite state. Man, you have a rock climbing wall at UNH. Come on, man, help me out. Listen, Iowa State, there are no rocks. They want a rock climbing wall, that's fine. But that's like Iowa putting in an artificial cornfield for you to walk through. Just go two miles in one direction and another, you'll find a cornfield in Iowa. Believe me, I've spent a lot of time there, you will. It's like saying you can't find rocks in New Hampshire, you can find them. You wanna climb them? And when I said this, I made this joke about UNH, one of the newspapers put a headline that, Christie's Assault on College Fitness. I want to tell you something, look at me, I've assaulted fitness in many ways. This was not one of them, okay? So we need to let you unbundle your bill. Now you're saying to yourself, okay, those sound like good ideas, Chris, but how are we gonna get them to do it? Here's how we're gonna get them to do it. If you don't do those two things, you do not get to participate in the federal student loan program or the federal student grant program. You want our money, you tell us how you're spending it, and you give us a choice on how we spend ours. And the government can do that, we can require that, and we should, because these colleges and universities are ripping off us and our kids. Not because they don't provide a good education, but because they spend money on things they have no business spending money on. And you know why? Because they know there's no bottom to what we're willing to give or borrow to help our children. They're playing on our emotions, and we need to put a market test on that. So that's what I would do. It's a little bit shorter than the normal answer. Yes, sir. Go ahead, try it again. Come on, guys. Who's working the malt box? Give her mine, here, you take mine.
I'm just an average worker, and I know a lot of our conversations have to do when we're talking about who's running for president. And when we talk about you, and this is no disrespect, one of the biggest things I hear all the time is, shady. How do you convince me, and now my vote is wide open, I love everything you're talking about tonight, but how do you convince me that you're not shady and you're actually here to help us?
Well, what makes me shady? Because I, because I, because I'm from New Jersey? Well, hell, I can't change that. But like, you know, I mean, it's hard for me to answer that, like, because I don't think I'm shady, right? So it's almost like, how do you answer a negative? Like, why aren't you shady? Oh, I don't know. Because I'm a good father and I'm a good husband. Because I was a good son, and still am to my dad. Because in a time when I could have been out making a fortune, in a lot of other ways, I've decided to dedicate the last 13 years of my life to public service. Having my wife outearn me every year, and I mean every year of our marriage, every year of our marriage, she's made more than me. But that's the sacrifice that we've made together. I tell things as I see them. And sometimes people like that, and sometimes they don't. You know, like when I told people in New Jersey, get the hell off the beach when the hurricane was coming. Some people like that, some people don't. When some protester, after I told him four different times that he could have a private meeting with me to talk to me about whatever it is he was yelling at me about, would not sit down and shut up, I told him to sit down and shut up. Some people like that, some people don't. I get that. In the end, though, I've never been accused, ever, of using the public trust to put money in my own pocket. I've never been accused of doing anything criminal. I've never been accused of doing anything that was in my own personal interest rather than in the public interest. Now, you can disagree with my decisions about what I think's in the public interest, but it didn't benefit me personally, it's just my opinion. And when you run and you get elected, you have the right to make those decisions on your behalf. And if you don't like my decisions, you can boot me out. That's what the democracy is all about. But it's hard beyond that for me to answer for you why I'm not shady. It's like, you know, we gotta get over, in some respects, because someone yelled that because I'm from New Jersey, we gotta get over these regional things. You know, this country has got to respect each and every place that's part of America for its differences. All right, so let's talk about New Jersey for a second. If all you do is watch TV, I understand why you might think that New Jersey is shady, right? Tony Soprano, Snooki and the Situation from the Jersey Shore, you know, New Jersey in popular culture is exaggerated. Believe me, Tony Soprano is not wandering around New Jersey. I can't tell you how many times, like, I get people come up to me, say, do you know Tony Soprano? I'm like, you know he's a fictional character, right? I knew James Gandolfini before he passed away, but James Gandolfini was a nice Italian guy from New Jersey who went to Rutgers and became an actor and played Tony Soprano. Snooki and the Situation are from New York. Yes, from Staten Island. They parachuted those people into New Jersey to our beach and made you all think they're from New Jersey. I tell Andrew Cuomo all the time, take them back. They're yours, Andrew, take them back, I don't want them. She just wrote a book that one of the first chapters is, Why Governor Christie Hates Me, Snooki. I said to her, I don't hate you, I just don't want you here, because you make people think bad things about our state. Our state is a tough, gritty, working-class state. We're also, by the way, the second wealthiest state per capita in America. We're the most densely populated state in America. 8.9 million people in a little thing this big. We're also the most ethnically diverse state in the country. More different ethnicities live together in New Jersey than any state in America. We have the second-most Muslim Americans in New Jersey of any state in America other than Michigan. If you watch TV, you think, oh, there were a bunch of Italian people hanging out and eating pizza. Not the case. So, in the end, the best advice I can give you, beyond telling you that, is you gotta use your gut. If your gut tells you that I'm not your cup of tea, don't vote for me, because I'm not gonna change. This is who I am, and it's where I'm from, and it's how I was raised, and there should be some comfort in that for you, because, you know, I'm not gonna change what I believe to try to get your vote. And I'm not gonna change who I am to try to get your vote. But what I will tell you is, that if I'm not your guy, the good news is, there's 12 other to pick from this year, big choice. I would never want you to vote for me if you didn't trust me. Because in the end, the vote gets me to the White House, but if I don't have your trust and your confidence, I'm not gonna be a successful president. And every time I make a decision, you'll wonder whether you made the right decision. When you go into the voting booth on February 9th, you or anybody else here, I want you to vote for me because you believe in your heart, as best as you can, that I'm the best person to be the next President of the United States. If over the next six weeks I win you over, I'll be thrilled. If I don't, you better vote anyway, because it's your responsibility here in this state. And even if it means you're gonna vote for one of the other guys, maybe I can give you a list of the ones I'd like you to vote for. That's right, help me a little bit. But I appreciate you asking the question, and I appreciate you being honest enough to ask that question if it was on your mind. And that's the best way I can answer it. And if it gives you any light into who I am, great, and if it doesn't, it was my best shot. So I took my best shot, and thanks for asking the question. Right there, I'll give you mine.
Governor, my wife and I just came from Brookside, and she said, told me to stand, always do it, my wife's telling me to. We just came from Brookside, we lived there for 45 years, you know where that is. And New Jersey's probably, I don't know if it's the bluest state, but it's probably pretty close, yeah. And you came from probably one of the most Republican counties in the country, either number one or number two. And you've been very successful in telling the story, and the people in New Jersey, you know, followed you. How do you do that with a lot of these other states that are, you know, obviously a lot larger than we are?
Well, first of all, just so that you all know, Brookside is a community in our hometown. It's a PO, it's a post office address, Brookside, but it's in our town, Mendham, New Jersey, where we all live. So, we were neighbors before you stole him too. I see so many people from New Jersey up here saying, I used to live in New Jersey. I'm like, thank you. Here's how we won in New Jersey, you were there and you know. How we won in New Jersey was that we just said to folks, here's the truth as we see it. And we said it in a very direct and blunt way. We didn't mince words with anybody, and we didn't for a second, not for a second, try to change our views to adjust to what we thought people in a blue state wanted to hear. We just said, listen, here are the problems, and here are the solutions I think we need to do to try to make this state a better place. And people listened. I think part of it is because I'm one of them. And they kind of looked at me and said, yeah, this guy understands this place, and we're gonna trust him. Part of it was, you know, they hated the last guy, right? Governor Corzine. Sometimes you benefit from your opponent, you know? And I did, I benefited from my opponent too. And I think the rest of it was hard work, like getting around to meet a lot of people who maybe had preconceived notions about you that you could dispel if they got to see you, if they got to hear from you. How do we do that in a country? It's harder, but let's remember something. Right now, 31 of our 50 states are governed by Republican governors. 31 of 50. We have more Republican state legislators today than we have had in over 40 years. We have a Republican majority in the House, we have a Republican majority in the Senate. This idea somehow that the Republican Party's not a national party is ridiculous. We have to nominate better candidates, and we have to work harder, and we have to campaign in places where we're uncomfortable. See, I don't think Republican candidates for president should go to any chamber, commerce, lunches, or dinners. Don't go. Know why? They're all voting for us already. You go there, it's great for your ego, right? You go in, standing ovation on the way in. Couple of times in the speech, standing ovation. On the way out, standing ovation, you feel great. You didn't pick up any new votes, most likely. The way I got re-elected in New Jersey, now remember, I got elected the first time in a three-way race by four and a half points, 49.5 to 45. I knew if I did nothing different the next time, I would be former Governor Christie. Because 49.5% in a two-way race, they weren't gonna give me a three-way race the next time. I knew it was gonna be one-on-one against the Democrat, and I was gonna have to do better. So what did we do? Mary Pat and I spent a lot of time in African-American churches in our state. Know why? Because those have been the most reliable Democratic votes in America for the last 50 years. And every time the Democrats come into an African-American church, they say, we're gonna give you safer streets and better schools. How's it working? That's all I said when I went there. Most time I just sat and listened, but when I spoke, that's what I said. I said, the Democratic Party has promised you safer streets and better schools, have they delivered? And if they haven't delivered for 50 years, what makes you think they're gonna deliver this year? Why don't you give somebody else a chance? We went into Hispanic neighborhoods, into their churches, into their small businesses, and sat and listened. And when I initially went, they didn't want to talk to me, because they had had a Republican come there for a long time. We have to campaign in places where we're uncomfortable. And when we go there, we better have our listening ears on, not our talking mouth, our listening ears, because we haven't listened to those folks for a long time as a party. And we need to listen. If you want to get their vote, you have to listen to folks, whether it's your vote or anybody else's. Gotta listen. And then you can talk about what it is you dream for them, what your aspirations are for your state or for your country. Last, I'd say to you that we have to be smart about opening our hearts. Republicans at times can be seen as hard-hearted, numbers people. We don't care as much as the Democrats do, that's baloney. I've met plenty of Republicans over my life who care just as much, just as much as Democrats, if not more, and if not in better ways. But we gotta open our hearts, we gotta show people. I used to tell Mitt Romney all the time, I said, gosh, I wish you would just crack open your chest and show America your heart, because if you do, you'll be President of the United States. He was uncomfortable in doing it. It wasn't him. I got no problem with that. People are gonna see my heart, they're gonna know what I believe in and what I feel, and people in America today need to see that. They don't want to only know what you think, they want to know what you feel. Because they feel a lot right now, and they want to know if their president feels the same things they do. They have a much better chance of voting for somebody who they think feels as well as thinks. And Republicans have gotten a bad rap on that for a while. We need to do better. But it's sacrifice on my part if I'm the candidate, like, you have to be willing to do it. And when you do that, you might lose. And then it really hurts, because if you lose when people don't like what you think, you go, all right. But if you lose because they think you're shady, if you lose because they don't believe what's in here, that's more personal. But if you're not willing to make that personal sacrifice, you got no business running for President of the United States. So I think that's the way we do it. And I like my odds if I'm on that stage next September against Hillary Clinton. Why don't you remember one thing that these folks know because they're from New Jersey, but you should know? 49.5% in 2009, in 2013, after governing as a conservative in New Jersey and doing these things for four years, 61% of the vote in a state that Barack Obama had gotten 59% the year before. The year before, he got 59, I got 61 the next year. I won the Hispanic vote, won it, 51% of the Hispanic vote in New Jersey. 22% of the African-American vote, up from 9% four years earlier. And 57% of the female vote against an 18-year female state senator. In the end, if you walk away from today with nothing else, just remember this, I know how to win. And if we don't win this election, we won't recognize this country in four years, we won't recognize it. There are no silver medals in this business, everybody. You either win or you go home. And I am out to win this election because our country can't afford to have another four years of a Democratic president. That's exactly what I'll say. All right, my staff...